One, welcome to the City Council this meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Vois.
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. Please join me in the pledge, but led by Mr. Dave Bozen, Ward Two Council.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda as proposed, as well as the approval of amendments of the April 5th, 2025 regular council session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we have an agenda. Right now, it's time for oral presentations. Your opportunity to address the council on non-agenda related items and let us know your thoughts.
Mary Potter, 1416 West Fourth, trustee of the Grout Museum. I think it's time that this particular group starts paying attention to what is really drawing people to Waterloo. And it is not just hanky panky little stuff. It's things like the Grout Museum, the Art Pavilion, many things like this. I have put a paper in front of you. Half of it is in jest and half of it is for real. Like I said, at 60,000 people at $85 apiece, we'd have so many million dollars, we wouldn't know what to do with it. So to be realistic, if we go down the paper a little bit, at the bottom, I've put two people that would donate $25,000, and that is not out of the question in Waterloo among people who donate for things. And 10 people doing $10,000. And I list at the bottom there, if we had 500 people who would donate $50, it would be a way of making this museum and the library work for the city of Waterloo. And then I put in the middle, because I like to remind people when people, we have a little raise at the Water Works and they'll go, oh my gosh, this big amount. I said, go without drinking a Pepsi once in a while, and you've got enough money for there. So in all seriousness, I do think we need to start thinking, you people work for the city, you want things that come into the city that are going to be good for the city. And it helps with hotel taxes, helps the restaurants make money and everything. So to say that you don't want to support this and that you cannot support it, when only four people on this council have memberships with the grout, I think that's real sad. The fact that you people are working for the city, living in the city, actually doing everything for the city, and yet you feel that there is not a need to participate in doing grout work. Thank you very much.
Stacey Roberts, 411 Almond. I want to go back to where I was speaking on the Roberts versus Roberts and how David Oderkirk absolutely took every drop of equity that I had out of a house that was worth closer to 13,5 than it was 48,000. Even with it being worth the 48,000, he really did me wrong by not fast-tracking the case, which it should have been done, and that's what they do with small amount cases, they fast-track it. He stretched it out to where I had a $14,000 lawyer fee, on top of not giving me credit for anything I had done the last 17 years of saving the house from the tax sale. So he did me, violated a lot of stuff in areas, not just related to the farm, but also in this deal. I wanted, was wishing that the chief would have been here because I had contacted Officer Treaster on a matter where it's Ramat Ali, who owns the place from Roby over today, Street, that strip mall in there. I'm going through small claims court with him, and the first time I got a call, it was from a policeman on a civil matter last fall. Treaster called me this spring because Ali is trying to keep my goats, basically. I got some goats that I bought for my grandchildren and they're comfort animals for me. He's trying to keep them, and when Treaster called, he told me to call him when I wanted to get my goat. And that's not how this is, this is not, it's a civil matter. And for him to try to tell me that, I called back to find out how Ali contacted him and that your dispatcher had no outgoing call, incoming call from Ali. So in other words, Ali is pocket dialing me. Got a speed, he got his number. I called Treaster and he didn't call back. What Ali has been doing is gaslighting me, and he's been using illegals also. And I caught on to this after I had did a lot of work putting fencing up there and I put a lot of time in there, and I got to get my material too. That's why I was telling Treaster, it's not just four goats. Ali has been using, it was a guy named Amir up here, and I didn't find out until after the fact, and if I found out today, the same thing, I would have called and towed ICE on him. Because he told me he had been put out the country twice. And if you've been put out the United States twice, you probably shouldn't be in Waterloo. And the reason I found this out, Ali wanted me to move something for him, and I used him to help me, and he told me not to go around people. I'm like, what you mean, don't go around people? So why is he out of the country? Now, Ali got the police, he's working as an informant, I do believe. And I don't understand the relationship with him and the police on a civil matter, and I would like for the chief to contact Treaster, because I have a court date on the 21st, and I wanted him to come and testify on why, I wanted to ask him some questions. Why did you call me? You understand what I'm saying? Another thing is, and I'm going, attorney, city attorney?
Marty's not here today.
He's an active city attorney.
First step in here.
I just wanted to tell him, my cousin Rodney Roberts, you remember him? He had told me 10 years ago to tell you hi, and then he told me to tell you the word relentless, because he said at some time, you asked what type of person I was, and he told you if it had anything to do with my daughter or that money, he said one word, relentless. I was his driver in the 80s. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Good evening. My name is Ellen Vanderloo. I live at 3608 Inverness Road. Hello. And I'm here tonight to invite the council, the mayor, the community, to a graduation party that, this is the 17th annual graduation party that we have thrown for youth who are aging out of foster care. So this year, we have 12 young people from the Cedar Valley area that are graduating. And this is a really big deal, because when you're in foster care, it's difficult to graduate from high school, because many times, kids get moved around and it's hard to keep track of credits. And so we want to really celebrate these young people. Many of them don't have family members that can throw them parties. So we're having a party on Thursday, June 5th, from 4:00 to 5:30 at the Van G Miller Room down there on Jefferson Street. I have some invitations, I don't know if someone can pass them to the council members. And anyone in the community is welcome. And at that time, the youth will each have a table, and we try to provide them with gifts that will be helpful for them, because when they turn 18 and graduate, they're out of the system, they're on their own. So I'm currently procuring household items like pots and pans and towels and microwaves and just everything that kids need to help set up their first apartment or dorm room. So we want to invite the community to come, to support these young people, and if you're able to, financially provide some support as well. It is a 501(c)(3) C, checks can be made to Success Link if you'd like to contribute to this event. So please come.
Tara, have you, have you done anything with him? I got her contact info, we may want to reach out. Okay. Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll give you, we'll give you a call, Ms. Vanderloo, and we'll get it worked out. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Price, and I'm the chairperson of the Design Council on the Main Street Waterloo Board of Directors at 512 Mulberry Street. I'm proud to serve on the Board of Directors and just want to take a moment to share some exciting things happening this week in downtown Waterloo and invite you all to be a part of it. On Tuesday, we're kicking things off with a special project involving some of our youngest community members. Second graders will be joining us downtown to plant 10 of our East Fourth Street planter boxes, while learning about pollinators and the importance of green space in our city. It's a wonderful way to connect education, beautification, and the community pride. And don't miss the excitement as the Waterloo Blackhawks compete in the Clark Cup Championship Final Tuesday night. Let's rally behind our hometown team and show them the full support of our community. Wednesday and Thursday, the Diversity is Our Strength mural will be reinstalled at Park Avenue and Mulberry Street. This vibrant piece of public art is a celebration of our shared values, and we are looking for volunteers to help with the installation. It's a great way to lend a hand and be part of something meaningful. Thursday evening at 5:00 PM, please join us in Lincoln Park for the Veterans Way banner kickoff, a moment to honor and recognize veterans in our community. It's a powerful way to show our gratitude heading into Memorial Day weekend. Friday at 5:15, we'll cut the ribbon on the completed Diversity is Our Strength mural, officially welcoming it back to downtown. And immediately after that, we'll roll right into the first Friday Lou of the season with live music, local food, and good vibes all around. Saturday brings the always popular Four Street Cruise, where classic cars and community connection takes center stage. And Monday, we'll gather once again for the annual Memorial Day parade, honoring those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Stay tuned for details on the celebration for the Waterloo Blackhawks on how we'll be recognizing their accomplishments this season. Sorry, there's a lot going on, I tried to do that really fast. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Right? Yes, sir.
Good evening. This is new to me, so you guys got to bear with me. I think, Ms. Wilder, I'm in Ward Three, I think you're my council.
Yes, sir.
I have a problem with the yard waste people. Last Tuesday, well, say, last Monday, I spent that in the commercial ward at Allen Hospital. I'm under the doctor now, I got to go to on Friday, and it was for my heart. They come out and dump my yard waste can, and it didn't, left some in there. And when I come in, my wife went out and got it, she said, Bill, the can is half-full. So I called them. I think I came down to your office, Mayor, the next day or so, I talked to whoever the lady was in there, and she wrote some things down. And I call the Waste Department, and some guy answered the phone, and he said, we'll send somebody out. Nobody came out, so I called back, and the guy, some lady said, well, I don't know what happened, so the guy wasn't supposed to tell you that, he's not a supervisor. So he said he'd send somebody out. The next thing I know, I hear from the supervisor, they're our, her name is, I knew her since she was a kid, her dad's a good friend of mine, I think she lived on the next street from me.
I know who you're talking about.
Ellis, Ellard.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, her. And she said they can't send nobody out there. She told me to get a stick and go out there and dig around in it and loosen that up. It was packed, and I said, well, you guys sent somebody out before. Said they don't do that. But the doctor told me not to do anything, till I see him, which is, the 23rd is Friday. And I said, well, if you guys can't empty the can, you might as well pick it up. So they come out and got the can, but I'm paying for it. So I want to know what's going on down there, the sanitation department.
Yeah, I got, they told me about it, Mr. McGee, and so I just said, the next day, I was just going to come out and do it myself, take a stick and do it myself, but yeah, and then I found out the following day. Was it your request to have them come pick it up, or did they come pick it up?
I told them to come pick it up, if they weren't going to do anything with it, I wasn't going to pay for it and not using it.
Yeah, I will, I'm going to have Randy, the director of Public Works, give you a call tomorrow. Sheila's here. If you could give me, stop that. If you could, first, I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
My name is Bill McGee, I go by Bill, my name is William McGee, I live 1619 Columbia Street, Waterloo.
And then, Mr. McGee, if Sheila is over here, Sheila's going to come out, take you in the hallway, get your telephone number, and then I'm going to have the Public Works Director give you a call directly about this situation. But I just told him, I'll just come over and do it, you know, it's just moving around, and if you're not able to, should have been taken care of. But by the next time I had heard to call and get the address, they had said the can had been picked up, so I'm going to have Sheila talk to you in the hallway, and then we'll have the Public Works Director give you a call so you can tell him about the experience too.
Okay, they need to bring the can back then. I don't have a can.
Right, that's what she's going to talk to you about.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, sorry about your inconvenience.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Matthew Carpenter, 518 Jefferson Street. Like to talk about the parking again some more this week. Originally, I was all in favor of the parking, came to the podium and addressed that, but I was misled on the locations of the kiosks. I was told that the kiosk would be on every block, and now, as we see, they're on every corner, and they are in use for every four blocks. My locations are not the only ones of my concern. Some of you know I am a member of the American Legion Sons and do a lot for them. Their location is, that's the 700 Block of Commercial Street. Their kiosk is across Fifth Street, so the veterans that park in front of the American Legion have to walk all the way down the 700 Block of Commercial, across Fifth Street, to the nearest kiosk. It's just concerning. Been in communication with the mayor, appreciate that. I talked to him on Friday, May 2nd, and he addressed to me that he would work on it. Then, on Monday, May 3rd, from the Main Street office, we got, us business owners got a nice email, and it stated, the parking program will be reviewed annually. Part of this review will include evaluating kiosk placements. Does a kiosk need move, or are additional kiosks needed? Again, upsetting. Talked about being reviewed annually. We need something done more sooner than annually. I spoke to KWWL. Some people were in favor of that, but I can't tell you how many senior citizens called me, emailed me, came into the diner, and thanked me for being their voice. These kiosks and text and pay are convenient for me and most users, but I got to speak up for my customers that come to my restaurant and frequent the businesses downtown. This parking system is not convenient for the senior people. My opinion, at this point, we need two-hour free parking. And I talked to some council people, and they're concerned about the revenue that they generate from these parking meters. And my opinion is, if a downtown business is barely making it and can have a more convenient parking system for the average user and the senior folks, that maybe we wouldn't have as many empty buildings, that these businesses could make it longer than what they are. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Right, is there anyone else that would like to present to the council? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
Second. Do we got council comments?
Council, any comments?
Yes, sir. I just want to echo what Mr. Carpenter said. I had a person call me today complaining about the kiosks. They're not visible. I mean, they don't stand out. I was, I was hoping and under the impression that they'd be like other cities where we put them in the center of a block and one on each side, so you don't have to walk a full city block and cross two streets to get to a kiosk. But there's, it's really hard, difficulty in identifying them as a parking kiosk, number one. So I know we need to work on signage, and I hope we can get that handled sooner rather than later. The other thing we did as a council is that we voted to shrink our parking district down. So we have areas around, around our parking district that's free parking for X amount of time, but you don't know it's free parking, because we have no signage to say two-hour parking or whatever we've decided to do. So then you've got people that are walking a block and a half, three blocks to find a kiosk, because they don't really realize that it's free parking since we've removed the meters. The other problem that we have is, and I brought it up and complained about it, that we needed to get parking spaces marked in the parallel parking markings. But yet, how we came up with this is beyond me, because an average parking space is 24 feet. We have areas that the parking space is 36 feet. You go to the next parking space, it's 33 feet. You go to the next one, it's, I know because I measured them. The next one is 31 feet. You get down to the end of the block and it's 21 feet. And you can't, I can't even park my truck in a 21-foot parking space that I don't hang over both ends. So that needs to be addressed. And last but not least, I've talked to people that have problems signing into the prepaid app. They tried to put the street and everything that they were parked on, and it came up a street in New York. So we've got some issues that really need to be addressed on parking. If we have to buy more kiosks, if we have to figure out how we're going to fund it, but I don't think it's working right now, and it's not making people happy. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to second a lot of what Mr. Bozen said. The one thing is about this parking app, all this stuff, we need conversation about how this is supposed to work. So our marketing, I think, is more accurate. We need to get a piece of paper out. I had a chat with a senior citizen, not from my ward, and explained everything to them. I just went through the process with them, and they were like, oh, this is actually pretty easy. And they're like, okay, I don't have a problem with this, but I need to see, everyone needs to see this. And I know we have done in the past where we've been able to send things to every citizen in the city. Maybe this is one of those circumstances that we make, have Tara make a nice, this is exactly how you go through this app and get signed up for it, because you shouldn't have to enter your street address, because it's only, you put your zone in, and then you just put in your license plate. So there's some type of miscommunication happening there with marketing about how this is supposed to work. I don't, I think a lot of senior citizens will be, a lot of them will be fine. There are some people that we do need to make sure these kiosks are very, very clear for. But I know that I'm doing the same thing at my job right now, where I'm moving from a paper system to an online system, and I'm going through the same struggles of getting people used to, you have to buy your tickets online now. So it's just a change in how things are working and how we move toward the future, but we really didn't market this well. We didn't get the information out in the way that we needed to. We didn't have the signs out. That's where our problem, I think, lays. Oh, on another note, last Saturday of the month, we have our Ward One and Ward Two meeting at the Ridgeway Sidecar at noon. So please come if you have anything you'd like to talk about, if you want to know what's going on in the city, if you want to talk to Mr. Bozen and I, if you want to have coffee, just come, sit, have a quick conversation, leave. You don't have to stay the whole time, it's just a chance to talk to your council members. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, just really quickly, I did have a meeting with staff, with traffic, Public Works, Finance, with Reimagine Parking, on some of the suggestions I received from Mr. Carpenter and from others as well, to try to figure out the locations, why things were placed in certain areas, what tweaks can be made to maybe move a kiosk or two around. I did have a conversation about the American Legion as well. Also, did have a conversation also just about the parking signs, and I think the question was, can we add onto the parking sign, free hour parking, or some type of verbiage to let people know that you get that hour and you don't necessarily have to register at that kiosk? I did have a conversation with Jessica as well, from Main Street, to talk about, you know, businesses, what was sent out to the businesses with regards to some of the parking changes. So yeah, it's a huge change, but we're going to make some adjustments and kind of tweak things to make sure we keep going till we get it right, and continue to market the best we can, and add that verbiage to the signs. I think Public Works is going to redo the current signs they have there as well, every one of them, to make sure we include that portion on it. So yeah, it's going to, we're working on it, so we'll try to get that done and make it as convenient it is for everyone as well. So it's not done, we'll continue to tweak. So appreciate all the comments from everyone.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of 181 bills payment for May 12th, 2025. That amount is $2,665,990.55. And then for May 19th, $8,47,471.80.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Vois.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there?
Right here.
We have Neil Miller, that is approved for appointment, barring any testing that needs to be done for the downtown area maintenance two position. Are you here, sir? All right, all right, thank you. Could someone take number one, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, proof of publication, notice of public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this portion on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon. Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number two?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a request by Mizu Ramen Iowa LLC for a site plan amendment to allow for changes in use in the C-1, C-Z conditional zoning district located at 1021 People Square.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there anyone that would like to make comments about this development? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. And, uh, close the hearing and receiving file recommendation of approval of the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion, receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to the ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a request by Mizu Ramen Iowa LLC for the site plan amendment to allow for changes in the use in the C-1, C-Z conditional zoning district located at 1021 People Square.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
The only thing that I was going to ask about, and it got brought up at the planning and zoning meeting, one of the tenants was concerned with parking, especially if another restaurant came in. Could anybody address that, that this has been dealt with?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, currently, the parking requirements, the restaurant is required to have 12 stalls, the smoothie place 10, Jersey Mike's 10, Cost Cutters 10, and then they have, so that's 42 stalls. They have a remaining 4,800 square feet. By ordinance, retail, the 4,800 square feet is empty, but we're assuming retail right now until something would come in would be required at one at every 200 square feet, which would be 24 more. They have 66 stalls on their portion of the parking lot. There is a shared parking agreement between the two sites to the north as well, so they do meet the parking requirements. As they continue to fill the 4,800 square feet, obviously, we'll have to look at the parking requirements as the more specific site plans come in or uses to see if it changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Noel, while you're there, this is going to be a restaurant, I'm assuming. Is there any plumbing issues or... I mean, if you're running a restaurant in a residential, is that something that the city checks before they open? Is that something that is a concern to anybody?
So, yes, I mean, they'll have to meet all building codes, plumbing codes and all that. And then, of course, we do have regular meetings with the sanitation department to find out if there's any concerns in that area. Obviously, we have the new fog permit requirements and all that that should alleviate any of those. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 1 through 4 in resolutions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to adopt the following resolutions. A resolution approving addendum number 5 and the amount of $14,210 with the Interest Solutions Group of Denver, Colorado, in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 construction to the fiber to the premise feeder distribution and backbone network project, contract number 1088, and authorizing the mayor to execute that document. Resolution approving a professional service agreement with EOC Environment Group of North Liberty, Iowa, in the amount of $8,830, in conjunction with the fiscal year 2024 Sergeant Road Trail Repairs Project, contract number 1091, authorizing the mayor to execute that document. Resolution approving addendum number 4 and the amount of $124,210 with Interest Solutions Group of Denver, Colorado, in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 construction of a fiber to the premise feeder distribution and backbone network project, contract number 1088, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute that document. And resolution approving addendum number 6 and the amount of $3,155 with Interest Solution Group of Denver, Colorado, in conjunction with fiscal year 2023 construction of a fiber to the premise feeder distribution and backbone network project, contract number 1088, and authorizing the mayor to execute that document.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions on these four items in our audience? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
It's just, I'm just disappointed that these numbers are so high. I mean, once we're locked in with these guys, the numbers just keep growing. I just think $14,210 to design the fiber into the new city hall, not to install it or do any of the work, it's just for design work into that building. I just think some of these numbers are really steep. That's all I have.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
No.
On which ones, Mr. Simon?
1, 2, 4.
Okay. And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, could someone take 5, 6, and 7, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AECOM Technical Service, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $260,100, in conjunction with the FY25 Biennial Bridge Review Program, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Number 6 is adopting a resolution approving documents and adopt a levy and final schedule of assessments in conjunction with the FY2025 Sidewalk Repair Assessment Program Zone 4, contract number 1111, instruct the city clerk to publish notice. And number 7 is a resolution approving an early access agreement with Three Studios LLC to allow certain development activities on land located at 115 Warp Drive, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Anyone with questions on these three items? Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone take 8, 9, and 10, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Twin Card Holdings LLC with a minimum assessment agreement of $135,000 and the cure tax abatement for the construction of a 45-foot, square-foot building southwest of 1010 Commercial Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Resolution approving a public mural agreement with Main Street Waterloo and Isaac Campbell Creative LLC, the artist, for the placement and maintenance of a mural on the wall of the East Park Avenue parking ramp at 310 East Park Avenue, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And a resolution approving a farm lease agreement expiring December 31st, 2025, with Michael S. Cook to farm approximately 5.25 acres of land for $1,050 located south of 2080 Northeast Drive, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions about these items, anyone? Yes, sir.
I have a question for Noel on number 10, or I mean, number 8 to start with, on that 4,500 square-foot building. Where's the parking on this? There's literally no parking shown on this diagram or the aerial photo on here. We also have a temporary drive that's coming in off the Alley Stone Drive, and it says eventually it'll be concrete. Do you have a timeframe on when they'll install concrete? But like I said, we require parking for businesses and buildings. Why doesn't this have parking?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, this is being built as a storage building in conjunction with the other buildings to the north and northwest. So, they will use this strictly for storage and it will connect back in with those.
Well, it clearly stated office and storage building in the...
I think there's a small office area, but again, it's connected to the other site as an overall one.
So, what's the address, then? I mean, can you actually address it off a commercial if there's a public alley in between?
For, for utility purposes, they had to have the separate address.
So, we're going to allow this not to have parking?
That is correct. The way that they're setting it up right now, obviously, they would come back and separate it out. They would be required to put parking back in.
So, if anybody in the future comes up and says, "I want to build a warehouse only," they don't need to have parking?
If they have another building next to it that it's helping to serve the larger business in, we look at the ability to join the parcels together.
So, are you, okay, so, they're connected with 1009 Jefferson, or are they connected with 1010 Commercial?
This is 1010 Commercial, so they'll be connected with the other one on Jefferson.
With a city alley in between?
I believe so, yes.
That's all I have.
It's similar, it's similar to if someone had two lots in a residential area and they built the garage on one and the house on the other. We allow it even though it's a garage on a separated lot, but then they have to have an agreement saying that they're not going to sell it separate of having the house.
And then on number 10, and I wish we would have done 10, 11, and 12 separate, but how did we come up with the $200 an acre? Because last week, we did farmland for $300 an acre. We've got $200 an acre, $200 an acre, and $100 an acre coming up to vote on. How do we come up with these prices when we have a, when we leased farmland to a farmer two weeks ago for $300 an acre and these are coming in anywhere between $200 and $100 an acre?
So, we regularly work with the Ag Office down on Southland. They have annual updates on what farmland is renting for. It's based on the CSR rating and all that and the suitability of the soils. So, we'll look at that. There's also a little bit of the size of the acreages. Obviously, there's a smaller one, so someone would travel and bring equipment to farm 80 acres versus not traveling so far for like the 3.7-acre one. So, we'll take those accounts, talking with them about what's a fair price. The one that's at 100 acres, at 3.7 acres, that's never been farmed before. That was a large site that actually had a small dilapidated house on it, so we 657A and took that. In the meantime, since we don't have any development proposals on that site, we thought farming it was the best way to bring in revenue. Obviously, the first year you farm it, it'll be a little bit tougher to get everything going out there and tilling it and all that, and so we did the reduced price for that one.
So, we've got 12 and a half, 15, 16 acres of land, similar to what we rented for $300 an acre to the Wolf Farms. But it's all the same person, and they're all in the same area.
Correct. He's in that area now, in the northeast industrial park. We can definitely bid it out. Obviously, anytime we bid it out, there's a chance that it could go lower. It could go higher. Again, these are close to the averages for what we're seeing countywide. The Wolf land has been tilled for quite a bit and has a higher CSR rating.
I was going to say, because if you look up farm lease land, and I'm seeing $260, $265 an acre, and we're well below this.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it varies with the CSR ratings and suitability and then the size of the acreages.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Simon?
Noel, on number 8, do we know what they're going to be storing in there and what type of vehicles we going in and out of there that, in the restricted area? Just to consider the...
The owners are the same owners as Builders Select, so we anticipate to be construction materials.
And so, that alley, will that alley be utilized by any kind of trucks going in and out of there at a higher rate than current? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out where these vehicles are going to park.
Sure. I mean, you know, in these commercial districts down by Superior Welding and all that, I mean, there's alleys in all those areas and we have some small commercial buildings, so I'd imagine they all have a good amount of truck traffic. Some of them are designed to have the loading doors in the back based on the smaller size of the infill sites. So, I think it's a pretty standard layout.
And this is the first, I mean, I've been doing this now for a year and a half, this is the first drawn-out agreement that I've seen extensively drawn out. Were you okay with all of the drawings?
We were. A lot of times, you don't see the exact drawings in the development agreement because a lot of it's in the planned districts. So, you'll see it go through the site plan amendment process as a separate one through the zoning, so we don't put everything in there since it's approved by the zoning. This one's a straight industrial zoning, so there's no site plan process required. We are required by the state code to do a development agreement now for all urban revitalization area commercial projects.
Okay, thank you.
One more question.
Anyone else? Mr. Boson?
One more question for you, Noel. What if they sell the building?
Then they would have to provide parking on it and a separate stormwater, so the stormwater is also shared for the site there, so they'd have to come into compliance with that or not be allowed to sell it.
And how would we know that they sold it?
Generally, we'd be notified by the realtor or someone like that, or we'll just notice that it's a different process because we'll have a covenant on there tying one to the other.
Okay.
So, the title opinion program, granted, if they don't use lawyers for the sale, sometimes we don't catch it right away, but usually, it'll come up in a title opinion tying one to the other.
Right now, they're not going to be tied to that property on commercial. They're not the same lots. They're different parcels.
The restrictive covenant will tie them together since they're not providing parking for the new building.
That's not in the development agreement?
That's just something we do in-house.
Okay. And so, and somehow, somewhere in this process, we'll be notified if they sell that building?
If they would go through, again, using attorneys, generally, someone would go to sell it. They'll do a title opinion on there to get clear title, and then we'd be contacted there because it'll show up as a as a mark against the title showing that there's a restrictive covenant saying they cannot sell it without providing additional parking and separate stormwater or some kind of a stormwater agreement.
If they use an attorney?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, someone take 11 through 14?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a farm lease agreement expiring December 31st, 2025, with Michael S. Cook to farm approximately seven acres of land for $1,400 located on multiple lots near 2330 GT Drive, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Resolution approving a farm lease agreement expiring December 31st, 2025, with Michael S. Cook to farm approximately 3.7 acres of land for $370 located adjacent to 3133 Rocky Road, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Resolution declaring a moratorium on the issuance of a special permit or variance for hobby farms in the city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa, and a resolution declaring a moratorium on the issuance of a new tobacco permits in the city of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Iowa.
Second.
The second. Regarding the hobby farms, I think by the end of this week, Noel, we need to have some scheduled meetings with the task group set up because too much time has elapsed without doing anything on that. And that's the same thing with taking a look at vaping within the city. We don't want to keep folks that are new trying to have new tobacco outlets. We don't want to keep them waiting too long, but we need to address this vape situation, bring the schools in and other stakeholders to come up with something very quickly, so we don't keep people waiting. Mr. Boson?
If, Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for someone to sit on that moratorium for the tobacco permits, I'd be more than happy to.
I need you on this hobby farms, too. We need to get this done, and you've been waiting patiently.
And I welcome that, too.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Also, as the most recent chair of the Iowa Tobacco Commission, that's no longer in effect right now because of the realignments at the state level, I'd also like to be on the tobacco permit discussions.
Was that a lobbyist firm for tobacco or against?
Definitely. I'm a healthcare provider, sir.
So, it's healthcare, okay. We don't want any conflict. Counsel, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you. Number one, I mean, could somebody take the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance establishing grades for the city of Waterloo fiscal year 2024 Sidewalk Repair Assessment Program Zone 4, contract number 1111.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?